The July 11, 2024 Des Moines City Council Meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Oxiger will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all council members are present. Do we have any correspondence that has not previously been received by council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. It's now time for comments from the public. We ask that you please keep your comments respectful and please understand that anybody who's speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be removed from the meeting. If your name is called, step up to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. So first up, we have Rick Johnson. Welcome, Rick.
Good evening. I'll start off with, I'm Rick Johnson, Redondle Beach. I'm working on my 68th residency in Redondle. Anyway, I can start off with the police department. I can call, I can save them 25-plus calls per month where the park, where it says, well noted, no parking. They're down there every night and early in the morning. Actually, residents there has the spotlights now that come out, they're triggered when they come down 281st, and that kind of scares them off. And here we, Redondle Beach Drive from 287th North, there's no, there's nothing this camera can do on that, the north side of 287th. I would think that if we had another pair of lights at 285th, it would cover all the streets. But also the streets, the, the, shoot, I knew this was gonna happen. Boat launch parking, actually, that's, last night there was an officer about 1:00 in the morning chased two of them off. I sat there for a while, it couldn't have been five minutes, here comes another one. And they're down there every night, every day. And a couple nights ago, we were woke up to like a fire zone, fireworks raining over the house, and three, two houses of my neighbors. I guess that's it.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks for coming up. Is there anybody who wanted to speak tonight, didn't realize you needed to sign up? All right then, thank you very much. So now it's time for some committee chair reports, and we have a couple tonight. We'll begin with the Environment Committee, which met this afternoon, and I'll pass it to Chair Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a couple of items, and we had a review of the National Pollution Discharge, Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. It's a five-year permit, and I have committed that to memory, because it, if you, we take it for granted, but the term of art is the receiving waters, and if you walk through the city, you see all kinds of little teeny tiny creeks, and in addition to, you know, the obvious beaches and so on, and we just have a really complex and intricate web of water systems, and it is a challenge to defend it and improve upon it. The requirements get bigger every year, kind of as they should, but it's a job making sure that this beauty persists into the future. And we got a very good presentation about how we are going to go about doing that. There will be new tests for things like PCBs and opportunities for public education. And we, moving on, we had a recap of Stormfest, which is an agreement between several of the cities that provides educational opportunities for kids at the beach, and that was a, I always enjoy that, because it's, it really, any opportunity we can have to bring kids into that discussion of just bentic sediment, I just love that expression, but, you know, all of the little critters and the fabric of, boy, I sound like a PBS special, but, you know, anything we can do to make it real, the importance of the water and how it all interconnects is fantastic, and I want to thank the staff for putting that together, particularly Michael. And let's see, beyond that, you know, I think we had a public comment concerning Des Moines Creek West, which is a development that, I'll take time in my comments at the end, but it's, that is a project that is of concern to the residents, and I just want you to know that we hear you. It is a wetlands project, the whole area, and we need to be sensitive to it. So, that's it.
Thank you, Chair. And next up, I asked for a report out from Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, who is our liaison to Destination Des Moines. He wants to give us a Waterland report.
Well, July is the busy month, and Destination Des Moines has several events planned. Some they're sponsoring, some it's a cosponsoring, the city, of course, is involved in a lot of them, and some, actually, all the way out into August with Rotary. So there's a community barbecue on July the 17th. I invite everybody to buy a ticket and be there and just enjoy a public event. There's the Children's Festival on July 20th. That's basically very much geared towards kids, younger kids, there'll be pirates and things like that. Then, of course, on the 20th also is the Waterland Parade, which Councilmember Mahoney is helping to put on. Still looking for boats?
Still looking for boats.
If you got a boat.
And volunteers.
Boats and volunteers. But it's a great parade, and, you know, I think a lot of us, I think everybody on the council is gonna be there, I hope. And on July 21st is Keels and Wheels, and this is a really unique show, it's boats and cars down at the marina, and so it's just fascinating to see how some people have tricked out their cars. There's a local car show, our group, car group that helps to sponsor it. And then we bring in a lot of, a lot of boats from the marina, and particularly the wooden boats, which I just, I think wooden boats are fascinating. And then we catch a breath, but only for a moment, because on August 24th, as you heard last council meeting, the Poverty Day Brews and Blues Festival will kick in full gear, and that's cosponsored by now many different organizations. And, you know, it's always just a great event, if you like, you know, sort of blues, and they are focusing this year on bringing women blues artists in, so it promises to be a really exciting, exciting show. I hope everybody can be there. And Madam Mayor, if you can indulge me, oh, the Pirate Cove, sorry, or the Children's Festival is sponsored by Legacy. So the Legacy Foundation is sponsoring the Pirate Cove, and where's that gonna be, Gene? Do you know?
Fieldhouse Park.
At the Fieldhouse, thank you. So, fill me in. I also attended the PIC meeting and can give a brief report on that. PIC is the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association, and really, really broad number of topics that we've dealt with. Solid waste management fees, they will be proposing to the council a 10% increase, but there was a very interesting chart of who's paying what throughout King County, and Des Moines is right in the middle. We are not as high as I had thought we might be, but that was very reassuring. They, there was a discussion on the proliferation of nuclear weapons and what we can do to get away, to try to influence that, and there is a movement with Washington Physicians for Social Responsibility, who came in through the Health Care Committee to make the presentation to us, and they're encouraging all cities to adopt a resolution in support of their project, which is to, you know, try to persuade everybody to get rid of nuclear weapons. The feeling is that we're a lot closer to nuclear war, and there is no greater health threat. If it is a full exchange between Russia and the US, then very likely, three to four billion people will die in the immediate and then in the aftermath of that, just huge devastation. It was also interesting to find out that the third largest nuclear arsenal in the world is over at the submarine base on would-be island. Yeah, I was shocked, I was amazed to find that out. And then lastly, we discussed the, something that I've mentioned before, which is the position, essentially a statement on asylees, which are people here in this country who are seeking asylum, and as many of you might be aware, both Kent and Tuck Willa have just been overwhelmed when a couple of very well-meaning, church-oriented groups opened their doors to a few, and they just got buried. And trying to get a little bit of coordination of that process, and so there's a statement that will come out. The mayor is on the board, and they'll be reviewing it, I think.
Next week.
Next week. And it's a really, it's a good statement for what it can be, which is a lot of different cities with a lot of different interests talking about it, but it's actually quite strong. And then lastly, we talked about the various levies that are on the ballot, both in August, November, and coming up in 2025, and there are a number of cities that are considering public safety levies or public safety tax increases on income, not on income tax, what am I, sales tax, thank you, I just blanked on it, you know, in order to pay for additional public safety. So we are not alone, and, you know, some statistics came out this week that Washington State is 51st in the nation in the ratio of police to population, and substantially below even the average in Washington State. So, you know, we're not the only ones in this dilemma looking for a funding source. But that's, that was pretty much our meeting last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Nice report. So moving on now, past our chair reports, into the City Manager's Report, and I'm gonna hand that over to our acting City Manager, A.J. Newton-Johnson.
Good evening, Council and Community. First, I'd like to invite South King Fire Chief Van Valkenburg up to the podium. Chief Van Valkenburg is here to give a presentation about the fire benefit charge that is on the August 6th ballot for voter consideration.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Very quickly, we're gonna talk about a little education seminar or session we've been presenting to the public and other, other groups about the fire benefit charge and why the FBC is a better plan for the future, not just for South King Fire, but for the communities that we so proudly serve. So thank you for your time this evening. I do have some handouts that are on the back counter. If folks want to grab handouts on the way out, there are QR codes and there are links to other upcoming events hosted by South King for additional information. So tonight, we're gonna talk about, real quickly, who we are and what we do. We're gonna talk about current and future demands. We're gonna talk about why the FBC is a better plan for the future. We're gonna talk about our current funding structure and why we're proposing the FBC, and then we'll close it off with talking about where you can find additional information. So South King Fire, we are very proud to celebrate our 75th anniversary this year, serving the communities of Des Moines Federal Way and unincorporated King County. We currently have 100, more than 150 firefighters on shift. We're providing service 24/7 out of seven fire stations. So we have seven, seven staffed fire stations that are in service every day. So what do we do? Most people know a little bit about their fire departments, and we consider ourselves an all hazards fire department. So that means not only do we do fire suppression and marine response with, with Fireboat Zenith and technical rescue and things like that, but we also are very proud of our fire prevention office and the work that they do in keeping the community safe and preventing things from happening, and doing fire inspections and permits and plan reviews, and being involved with the communities as they grow and as they build and making sure the buildings are as safe as possible. We do community outreach and engagement, and hopefully some of you had a chance to swing by our open house a couple weeks ago at Station 67. It was a big hit. The balloon, the balloon lady and the face paint lady kind of stole the show from the fire trucks, which was kind of surprising, but it happens, so next time, no balloon lady. Don't tell her I said that, 'cause she's coming back for one more event. And then another thing I'd like to really stress is that 80%, 70 to 80% of what we do is emergency medical services. So while we are out still doing all of the other things we do, about 80% of what we do is EMS calls, and that's a very vital and key component that we serve, that we provide to our communities. Oops, wrong button, my apologies. So we're serving more than 160,000 citizens now. We have 41 square miles, it includes the cities of Des Moines, Federal Way, and unincorporated King County, and part of that unincorporated King County and part of the city of Des Moines, Des Moines, excuse me, is the Puget Sound coastline, 12 miles of it. And so we expect our population to grow, and as our population grows, we are expecting our call volume to continue to increase. So that's why we're proposing the FBC. The FBC actually puts us in a position to have a stabilized funding mechanism that is more in alignment with the rising demands that we're seeing in our communities. So the plan is to, because of the rising demand and creating stabilized funding, we can, we can lead with transparency, and we can, we can be more proactive in our planning cycle, and we'll talk about that in just a second. So our rising demand, we're up 54%. If you look at our call volume 2012 compared to 2023, we're up 54% for emergency responses. And that's not just, that, the significance of that number is not just the, just the amount of growth or the amount of increase, but it also is the severity and the intensity of the calls we're going on now has dramatically changed. It's taking more firefighters, more resources, and we're committed longer to these incidents because of the growth that's in our city, because of the style of buildings, and because of some of the, some of the challenges our communities face. So this is just another example, right? We've, it's gone up year after year after year, and we expect that to continue to increase. We're on pace, actually, to exceed 25,000 calls this year, which is slightly concerning. The population growth is also expected to continue to climb. If you look at 2000, when we served roughly 140,000 people, and above 160,000 today in 2020, that projection is continue, is expected to continue to rise. So the rising demand, why is the rising demand important? Well, the rising demand is putting us in a position where we can no longer keep up with growth. We can no longer keep up with demand for services. And this may sound, this may sound vaguely familiar when we talk about our brothers and sisters in blue and trying to keep up with demands within our community. This, we are suffering some of the same experiences, and so our response times are becoming longer. So the amount of time it takes us to get from, to, from the fire station to someone's residence or to a business or to a multifamily building when they call 911 is actually increasing, which is bat. That, that, the increase in call volume makes it harder for us to get a positive outcome. It makes it harder for us to stop a fire before there's a loss of life. It makes us hardest, harder for us to intervene medically and not have negative impacts for the patients. So that response time is, is very important. The other part of that is resource availability. Because so many of our units are committed so often, we're having to rely on either fire stations, crews from fire stations farther away, or crews from fire stations outside of our jurisdiction to come into, come into the jurisdiction and help with responses. And so that is also, that, the resource availability and the, the long response times are impacting our ability to serve the community, and that is probably not going to change. With higher growth, higher density, increasing call volumes, we are, we are gonna continue to fall farther and farther behind unless we find a way to change. Our current funding is, is impacted by fluctuations in property tax. So we have this rising demand, we have this uncertain funding model, and then we have this planning model that we try to implement that never seems to quite come to fruition, because we always have this cycle of uncertainty. To give you an example, we had this great and wonderful plan, we were gonna hire a bunch of firefighters, we were gonna take a fire engine and take an aid car, we're gonna put fire engine, put people on those fire engines, we're gonna have them go out and serve the community. We did a levy lid lift, so we took our, the amount of money that we were collecting to the maximum, to the $1.50 per thousand of assessed valuation, we took it to the maximum, voter approved, continue to support the fire department, we're very thankful for that, but then property values went down by a billion dollars in the jurisdiction, and we actually collected less money than we were before the lid lift. And so we didn't hire 16 firefighters, and we didn't staff a fire engine, and we didn't staff an aid car, because that uncertainty in our cycle of planning is tied to our funding model. So our funding model currently, we collect $1.50 per thousand dollars of AV or assessed valua, assessed valuation, that's your regular property tax. We also collect 13 cents per thousand, that's a maintenance and operations levy. That maintenance and operations levy expires at the end of this year. We also have roughly 10%, 10 cents per thousand that we collect for safety improvement bonds. So in totality, somebody that lives in the fire district is paying $1.73 per thousand of AV, and that is straight across the board. It doesn't matter who you are or what you do, everybody plays, pays the same, $1.73 per thousand of AV. There's no fluctuation based on who you are or what you do. So we're proposing a FBC or a fire benefit charge. The fire benefit charge puts us in a position to meet the current and future demands of the community, and it takes away that cycle of uncertainty and lets us plan because those fluctuations go away. When AV values are very high, when everybody's home's worth lots of money, we get lots of money. When AV values go down and, and everybody's home is worth a little bit less, we get less money. So from year to year, our revenue, as we call it, or the amount of money we get from the county, from our residents to provide services, fluctuates, and it can fluctuate by as much as $10 million. So it's very hard to have a stable funding mechanism when it goes way up and way down. It's very hard to provide services when it goes way up and way down, because you could have enough money to pay for something one year and not have enough money to pay for it the next year. So the stabilized funding, the FBC is not new. We are one of the few fire districts or fire authorities in King County to not have in an FBC. If you look at the slide up there, you'll see quite a few of our neighbors are on that board. The FBC was put in place by the state legislature in recognition of the fact that the, the current funding model for fire districts and fire authorities, straight AV, wasn't working. So it was put into place, and so we're, we are going to capitalize on a tool that many of our neighbors are using so that we can be more stable in our funding and provide better service. So what is, what are the important components of an FBC? The FBC is not a tax. I want to be very clear, the FBC is not a tax. The FBC is a, is a fee based on the size of your structure, the property use, and the fire risk factors. All of that data comes from two sources. It comes from the National Fire Protection Agency, who's a, who's a national agency that, that puts out standards on level of care and, and operations and all kinds of things for the fire department, but they also publish the, the Fire Safety Code and some of the building codes, and, and they look at their data and they say, if you have this type of building, like a dynamite factory, you're more of a fire risk than a single-family home. Okay? And yeah, they actually put that in a book. We all get it intuitively, but they put it in a book. And so it, it aims to put more onus on those eight, those buildings that would require more resources or call 911 more, 911 more often, and lessen the burden for people that live in a single-family home or may live in a multifamily building that doesn't access 911 as much and doesn't require as many resources or doesn't pose the same risk as larger buildings or hazards process. So our current funding is on the left, that $1.73 that we talked about. With the FBC passing, there's a couple of things that happen that are very important. The amount of money we collect in our normal tax assessment goes down by 50 cents. So instead of collecting at $1.50, we go down to $1. The maintenance and operations levy, that 13 cents would go away, because with the FBC passing and the, and the maintenance and operations levy expiring at the end of the year, we don't need both. We don't need to double dip. Then, the, the 10 cents per eight, for per thousand AV, the safety improvement bond, that stays. So basically, your tax rate would go down to $1.10 from $1.73. So your basic tax, tax rate has some savings in it when we put the FBC in place. So we, we talked about the FBC, and we talked about where the data comes from. So how big is your structure? What do you use it for? Does it have any special hazards? Does it, what, what do you do with it? So we take your property type, and we take your hazards, and we come up with a fee per, based on what you are. So if you look at this slide, the average homeowner is going to save a little bit of money. So the average homeowner is gonna see that the, the amount that they pay for fire protection and for EMS is going to go down a little bit. Now, this is kind of counterintuitive, that how am I gonna pay less and get more money? Right? How my, how's that work? Well, it's because, it's because the, the FBC is designed to level the playing field a little bit so that everybody pays a little bit of, a little bit of their fair share based on risk, and we capture a few members in our community that currently don't pay any property tax. I'll give you an example. We have a couple of very large assisted living facilities in our jurisdiction that are owned by a religious organization. They pay zero property tax, and we go there more than 1,000 times a year. They would now pay the FBC based on use and risk, they would be on the hook for the FBC, which makes it so that other folks can pay a little bit less. So the average homeowner is probably gonna see a reduction in their overall exposure or what they pay. Now, the FBC is collected by King County, you don't have to do anything special, you don't have to write a check, you don't have to come down to the station, all you come down, I'll give you a cup of coffee, but you don't have to come down to the station and write a check or anything, it's just, it's incorporated into your tax structure by King County. So because the FBC is regulated by WAC and by the county, there are still some exemptions. So if you are a church, if you are a school, if you are a place, a sanctuary, you will still have some exemptions. If you're a low-income person, or you're, you're a person with disabilities, or you're a senior citizen that has discounts, those discounts still apply. We're not taking any of that away, and it still applies to the FBC. And then the FBC will be on the ballot August 6th, and so we do need a 60% majority for this to pass. We're very optimistic that's gonna happen. It goes into place for six years, and this was very intentional on our part. There's an option to go six, 10, or permanent, and we're going six years on purpose so that we can evaluate the implications of what happens, and we can go back to the community and say, do you agree or do you disagree? Do you like what you got? Do we need to adjust? Can we change? Or should we change? And so we're being very intentional about making sure the voters have two Or should we change? And so we're being very intentional about making sure the voters have two say, two opportunities to voice their opinion before we change anything. Um, so with that, that was a very brief overview of, of where we're at so far. Now let's talk about what happens if it doesn't pass. If it doesn't pass, the dollar fifty stays. If it doesn't pass, we stay at the dollar fifty per thousand. We experience an almost a four million dollar shortfall. Because if the benefit charge doesn't pass and we don't have the ability to make up. Some revenue that we're going to lose at the end of twenty twenty-four, we end up with a shortfall. We have some money set aside. We have a plan. We have some, some options available to us, but if we suffer a four million dollar shortfall, we will not be the same fire department we are today. Next year. We will reduce services in some areas. What those areas are, we're not completely committed to yet, but we do have a couple of different options. And so the loss of revenue is going to impact. Levels of service and response times across the whole forty-one square miles. So we would also have to go back to the voters and get another maintenance and operations levy early in twenty-five. And then that would help make up the shortfall. And then at some point in time, we'd probably have to come back and ask for a very large. Uh, bond and or another bite at the apple for a benefit charge because. The maintenance and operation levy is not stable enough for us to plan ahead. It's going to continue to have those ebbs and flows, the peaks and valleys that we're trying to get away from. So, uh, we're very proud to serve our communities and we're very proud of our seventy-fifth anniversary this year. Um, and we are very, uh, optimistic that the community will understand why this is a benefit to them and why. Why we are asking for their support. If you have more questions, there's the Q R code and the phone number and the website. That's also on the handouts that are up here on the side. If anybody wants to grab a handout on their way out. Um, and be able to look at, uh, information on our website. Uh, my favorite picture, Brett Conley. He looks like that every day, big smile on his face. Uh, at this point I would open it up to the board if there was any questions. Excuse me, board, that's my world. Council is your world. Yes, sir.
Member Mahoney and then Councilmember Nettie.
Um, so I talked about, you know, I think you mentioned you said eighty percent of your calls are emergency response.
Yes.
Um, is, is the, uh, op, opioid and fentanyl? You know, the increases in those types of activities being one of your major drivers these days?
Uh. Okay, um, yes, it, the, the, we have the same challenges as, as. The P D and the communities. It's, it's drug abuse, it's unhoused, it's transient populations. Those all are part of the drivers, but the other part of it is we also have an aging infrastructure. So. We have more fires and we have, you know. Uh, the other day we had two, two house fires going on at the same time and that, that really taxed the district when you have multiple fires and. We are a busy fire department. We, you know, we're one of the busier departments in King County. If you take Seattle out of the mix, because they're Seattle. We're one of the busier departments in King County and so. Those are some of the drivers, but part of it is also just growth. Um, you know, you get a, you get a five over one building with something simple like an automatic fire alarm and it, it's taking a half an hour, forty-five minutes to make sure it's a false alarm. Because there's so many things to look at. So it's a multitude of factors, but those, those are part of the drivers.
Um, you, you kind of answered my second one. I was going to talk about population. Uh, and are you still responding to COVID? At a.
I would have said no if you asked me that question two weeks ago, but we've seen an up spike in people. Calling nine one one for COVID like symptoms. Now, the protocols have changed a little bit. It's very. It's very interesting to me to see where we were in twenty twenty with masks and testing and. All the things we're doing and now it's, oh, you got the flu. We'll give you a ride to the doctor and. It'll be okay. Um, but it is, there has been an uptick in COVID like symptoms, just a couple here and there, but enough that you notice. Um, backing up one step. You, you were asking about opioids and, and some of those challenges. We are putting a brand new po, program into place. Uh, next week they go live on Monday. So we have a mobile integrated health. Unit that goes live on Monday and their, their focus is connecting people to services that our firefighters are not traditionally trained to provide. And so, um, if you have somebody, you know, the easy one is a senior that keeps falling in their home. Then we can connect them with the resources for fault prevention to put Velcro under rugs and put up grab bars and things like that. And that program is eventually intended to grow to the point that we can partner with. With our law enforcement partners and, and have multiple units that can deal with behavioral. Behavioral health and drug abuse and seniors in homes and, and all of the myriad of things that are taxing our communities. So they go online Monday, which is very exciting. That's been a. Two years coming to get that up and running.
That's excellent. Um, the last question, obviously I, I, I noticed federal way is starting to get tall.
Yes.
And obviously all our communities, particularly in South King County is finding additional housing. And I see that being particularly like on the pack highway corridor, which crosses over several cities having to go up. Assume that part of your plan is to add like ladder trucks that can handle higher. Buildings and some of the things we pretty much haven't had till, till more recently.
You're going to put me on the spot with the union.
Good.
Uh, yeah, yes. Um, the ultimate, the ultimate goal is that we are going to put two ladder trucks in service. So we have one currently. We have a dedicated ladder truck at station sixty-four. Um, but we would like to have one more. We are fortunate and at all of our operational partners. Um, we get this, time of call, you get the closest unit gets dispatched. So you get the closest fire unit wherever they're coming from. Um, so we do have access to other resources. Um, in the same timely fashion as our own, but we do need a second ladder truck. Um, where we're going to, how's it hasn't exactly been nailed down. One thing that we did recently is we created a standards of, of. A standards of, uh, what did we call it? Standards of building, but that's not the title. Um, as we renovate our fire stations, everything will be big enough to host a ladder truck because you don't know what the future is going to hold. So.
Thank you. Those are the questions I have.
Councilmember Nettie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Councilmember Mahoney, um, asked one of the questions that I had, but, uh, what, when, when was the last time? That we went out for the levy and bond, uh, for the fire department, South King?
Uh, the last actual vote on anything would have been last Oc, last August when we did the levy lid lift from, we were at, I think, a dollar thirty-two. We went up to the dollar fifty. Um, before that, we had the M and O levy that expires this year. So that would have been six years ago.
Yeah.
And then way before my time, two thousand. Nine-ish, there was a vote on a fire benefit charge, but at that point in time, we were one of the first organizations to try to do an F B C. And it didn't go over well. Um, but I, you know, sometimes it's not always best to be the first mover. And so part of the problem was there was a lot of uncertainty around how it worked and it, it didn't really resonate with. The communities, you know? It doesn't seem like much on paper to say you might save a hundred bucks, but for some of our residents, for some of the community members we serve, a hundred dollars. A year is a big deal. So if we can increase services and provide sustainability and stable funding and planning. And save a little bit of money, we're, we're pretty committed to that idea.
Yeah, I was, I was proud to be able to phone bank for the, the one six years ago. So that was great. Um, second of all, you, you touched on it a little bit, but. Um, with the increase of population means the increase of plan review. And, uh, um, job walks and that kind of stuff and, and I, I don't. I, I'm not entirely sure. Does South King do their own plan review or do they sub out to a third party for that?
We do our, well. Maybe sort of kinda. So we do most of our own plan review in-house. However, when we start getting into the, the five over one style, right, commercial with five stories of living ahead above. Um, some of those buildings become very complex and the fire code requirement and we may sub that out. But the fire code allows us to sub that out and then build the developer. So there's no cost to the community. There's no cost to the fire department. We go back to the community and say, hey, or the back, sorry, back to the developer and say, hey. We don't smoke removal. We don't have the expertise to review your smoke removal plan and make sure it's done appropriately. So we. We do a little pass through.
But then there is time though to, to trip all the P R Vs and the stairwells and all the other stuff and, and. The fire pump room and.
Oh, all of that good stuff.
So and, but that takes time and.
Yes.
Uh, man hours away from being able to fight fires if you don't have a staff that's.
We have a dedicated staff in, in prevention. Uh, we'll, plan reviewer, plan re, fire marshal, plan reviewer. Three inspectors, two construction inspectors and an assistant fire marshal.
But if this doesn't pass.
They may not be there.
Correct. Yes, thank you, sir.
Any questions? I have a couple. So of, uh, as a, as a source of funding, an F B C, who is able to use that?
So the F B C as a funding mechanism is, is specifically fire districts and fire authorities.
No municipalities can use that. Okay. Just for clarity there. And, um, it wasn't too clear to me. So, um, single family residential will pay. The F B C, is it a replacement for property tax or is this really mostly going to lean on? What you said, you talked about certain other kinds or businesses, uh.
That's a good question. So the, the single family resident will still pay, but they'll pay a little bit less.
Okay.
They'll save a little bit of money. Specialty hazards and I, and I'll, I will use, uh. Some of the larger distribution warehouses that are in the city of Federal Way. They may pay a little bit more. Because they have a large footprint, right? A two hundred thousand square foot building. And they present more risk and, and they will require more resources. So they may pay a little bit more. Smaller businesses unfortunately may pay a little bit more, but it won't be a dramatic amount. So it does shift a little bit of the burden onto the business owners. Um. But it's a, it's a, it's not a, it, it may be a hundred dollar increase or a two hundred dollar increase. It won't be a ten thousand dollar increase.
Right. So if it will be single family residential and you're talking about the quality of structure. Are, are gonna, are people going to be looking forward to, um, in-person assessments or are you going to be able to gather most of this from? Um, a database at King County?
So we are, we are able to gather all the information we need from the database.
Okay.
County. And that's an important consideration within the program of the fire benefit charge. If somebody gets. Gets told, hey, you're paying, you're paying two hundred dollars. And they say, but I have a sprinkler system. All right. They, there's an, there's a, there's a avenue for them to make sure their data is accurate and appeal. And ask for a review to make sure that what was in the King County database is accurate for what we're using.
Okay. Yeah, those are all the questions I had. Uh, I have two more. So I'm going to go with Councilmember Harrison and you, Councilmember Nettie.
Thank you. And I'm not trying to blindside you, but I'm fascinated by the concept of hazard and risk. Um, so, um. Could it be the case that a homeowner or business upgraded their, uh, property in some way and, um. That would, you know, redound to lowering their, uh, charge? I mean, in other words, are there any incentives to, for people?
So if, if a homeowner, if a homeowner or a business owner decided to put in a sprinkler system, a fire detection system. If they decided to do some of those things, they get credit for that in the F B C and actually reduce their rate. So there is some incentive there. The one caveat is it has to be. Approved, right? So it has to have a plan review, a permit and done by a licensed bonded contractor, but. If you do put fire protection systems in, there is a benefit.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nettie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, sorry, one last question. Um, on the exemptions. Here, uh, certain nonprofit organizations, public schools, religious organizations and schools owned by religious organizations. Uh, you, you mentioned the, um, two large organizations that we have that are faith-based. Here, um, in the city, would they? Qualify for these exemptions from the F B C?
So if you have a religious, a religious based K through twelve school. That's exempt. If you are a religious organization operating an assisted living facility. The assisted living facility is considered a business operation by WAC and that business operation would be subject to the F B C. If you have a church, if you have a sanctuary, if you have a, you know, a, a place of worship, that's exempt. But if you had, uh, facility that was selling merchandise that was a standalone facility, that would be considered a business and would not be exempt. The WAC is very specific.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll go with, uh, Councilmember Oxiger and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
So this, the fire benefit district would, uh. Would completely replace the property tax.
It will, it will come, it will replace fifty cents of it.
Fifty cents of it.
Yeah, ours, our authority to tax is up to a dollar fifty. By putting an F B C in place, we give up fifty percent or fifty cents, not fifty percent. Fifty cents of our dollar fifty.
Okay, and where in the dollar fifty? Okay, I, I'm, I don't have the exact terminology here, but. I know that special purpose districts, uh, for example, the pool district. They can tax up to fifty cents per, uh, assessed valuation. Uh, but then there's a, an additional twenty-five cents on top of that. That basically it's, there's a priority list and the fire department is first in that priority list and they can actually veto whether or not. Uh, the, the, uh, uh, pool district would be able to assess the. My question is what happens with that formula if you go to the, uh, benefit district?
So the nice thing about Washington State property tax law is it's like based in the eighteen hundreds and it's, makes perfectly good sense. So I'm going to, I'm going to give you my best answer, the way that I interpreted it. We give up our fifty cents. It goes away. We, we don't have access to it. We don't lose our position in that hierarchy. But since we don't have access to the fifty cents, I have a hard time envisioning that we would have a very stringent opinion. On how it gets broken up within the, within the jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify one thing. The, um, the religious organization running the assisted living. They're not currently paying any property taxes.
Correct.
Is that correct? Because of their religious status.
Yes.
And because the fire benefit is not a tax. According to law.
Yes.
Uh, that's why they can be charged it because they're running a business.
Yes, and, and the WAC has specific language in there that says if it is a business operation. Well, if you're charging rent and making money, that's a business operation. So, um, they would ac, they would actually be subject to the F B C.
Are there any provisions about, um, the organization not being able to pass it along, like simply raising rates to everybody? Or any way to slow that process?
Un, unfortunately not. Um, the, the asterisk to that statement would be. We are being very intentional on the fire benefit charge and how it impacts our community and keeping it as low as possible so that. If there is anything passed along to some of our community members, it's a, it's a very small amount. It's as small as possible. I, that's not the best answer, I know. Apologize.
It's then the honest one is, thank you.
Hey, any further questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. It was a pleasure to see all of you. Have a great evening. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Passing it back to Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also wanted to make the council aware that city staff will be bringing a resolution, um, forward on, at the July twenty-fifth council in support of the fire benefit charge. So before I move on to the next item on the city manager's report, I just wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge, um, Dale Southwick. He is our I T director that retired yesterday. Um, he served the city faithfully for twenty-five years, six months and thirteen days. Um, just for context, he joined us in December of nineteen ninety-eight and I did say this to him, so this isn't a secret. Um, in December nineteen ninety-eight, that was a time when Google was just starting out and we were using dial-up, so. Um, I, I want to express to the community and the council that there really aren't, um. Enough words to adequately describe his importance to the city. Um, he's played a pivotal role in establishing and maintaining our I T infrastructure and guiding us through countless technological advancements and challenges. So while Dale's presence will be deeply missed by our staff, I also want to acknowledge that the I T team is in very capable hands. Um, Chris Pock is our acting I T director. Um, okay, so moving on, now I'd like to introduce the council and the community to our new Public Works Director, Mike Levin. So if I can invite you up to the podium. So before I turn it over to Mike, uh, I wanted to take some time to highlight his background. So Mike joined the team on July first. He comes to us with twenty-nine years of experience at the city of Tacoma where he worked on many municipal projects such as the Thea Foss Waterway. Superfund cleanup and redevelopment, the Tacoma Convention Center construction. The Center for Urban Waters, Pacific Plaza Development in Mini. Development, and many more. During his time in Tacoma, Mike served as the Public Works Director, and most recently as the Environmental Services Director. He is also a retired Army Officer, having 28 years of active and National Guard service. Mike's deployed to Desert Sorm, Iraqi Freedom, and Afghanistan as an airborne Sapper Qualified Explosive Ordnance Disposal Officer. I think that means he likes to blow things up, but he'll clarify that for us. And most notably, was awarded two Bronze Stars for his actions in combat. He's a Washington State Licensed Professional Engineer, and holds a degree in Civil Engineering from Washington State University, and an MBA from the University of Washington. Mike lives in Pierce County with his wife Debbie of 32 years, and he has two sons, and in his spare time, he loves to fish, hunt, and fly. So, welcome, Mike.
I think, oh, that's on, green is on. First time. Mayor and council, I want to thank you so much for letting the city manager and the team bring me aboard. It's, I've only been here two weeks, I am very, very impressed with the team, and the professionalism I've seen so far with your crews. I spent Monday out at the Public Workshop, meeting all the crews, the Parks crews, and met with the fleet mechanic, met with all our engineers, and Tyler here was giving the presentation this morning about MPDES, and I just hope I can bring, bring value to the city with my experience, and continue to support this great team.
Wow, anybody have any questions for him? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Just a statement, go Army.
Well, welcome.
Hope they sun serve right now.
Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you, excited to see what's going to come about as a result of you being here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mike. Next on the city manager report, I'd like to bring up interim chief Mark Coe, who will be sharing some policing stats from the timeframe of July 2nd through July 5th.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council, guests, staff. Actually, I'd like to talk about the operational period that we define as the 2nd through the 5th, but actually, due to your good work, the new ordinance that you passed, I think, did make an impact. In fact, the ordinance was shared by me sending targeted letters to residents where we had complaints in the past. So, it was, I think, a fairly tame letter that just said, here's the new ordinance, save yourself some money and hassle, please follow the law. We also included that in our social media campaign, and incorporated that into our event planning. Of course, we include the drone show down at the marina, and the events around Beach Park as part of our event planning. We had extra officers on duty to include an entire team, our CSOs, and then we hire four security/traffic control officers through Seattle's finest. We've done that for years, we did that again this year. So, calls regarding fireworks between noon and 2:00 in the morning on the 4th, we had 16 calls to 911, 15 calls to the department's non-emergency line, but that includes repeat callers, and two email complaints, and the two email complaints were a little bit humorous because I think people were thinking that we were reading the email. If you read it, it's like, I need you to show up right now, and it's an email to the police generic site. You know, interestingly, so South King Fire asked what their call load was for the 4th of July, and the chief told me that they had 19 fireworks-related calls district-wide, zero structure fires, and one significant injury where a kid blew his hand off.
Oh dang.
So, but the key point, the takeaway, what we saw was it was down significantly, as did South King Fire, they saw it was down, their call load was down significantly. Other calls during this period, so I know this is about fireworks, but so that you know, during that same noon to 2:00 in the morning on the 4th, we had 20 other calls, which included four welfare checks, three theft calls, two domestic violence calls, two suspicious subjects, one illegal discharge of a firearm, one dispute, an order violation, an auto theft recovery, suspicious noise, and the noise was a female screaming, wasn't a firework, one vehicle accident, one commercial alarm, and one parking complaint. And the reason I include those is because people invariably say, why didn't you show up and write my neighbor a citation for firing fireworks? Well, all of those calls that I just listed to you take a lot of time to handle. However, for fireworks enforcement, we did have five instances of fireworks seized, and so we have a metal box behind our station, and the officers bring those back, put them in this metal box, it's a lockbox, which is later, we put also old ammunition and other things that are too hazardous to put into evidence, and they are later picked up by the Port of Seattle Bomb Squad and disposed of. Three citations issued, nine warnings issued, and when you do the math, it's actually a higher percentage than you might think when you compare it to the 16 calls to 911 and 15 calls to the department. I realize a lot of people don't call, and they're just mad, and they post on social media. We realize that people might get a hold of their neighbor, or they might complain later, so I understand that that's maybe not necessarily an accurate reflection of the number of calls. But I also remind people that we do have a pretty good response time, and even with a response time of 10 or 15 minutes, a lot of times, it's what we call UTL, unable to locate, so the officer gets out there, they can't find the person or the place exactly, and so they may or may not contact the residence. We also had several calls where fireworks were fired from vehicles, so mixed into that number that I gave. And the other thing, too, is some of us know Normandy Park allows fireworks, and so a lot of times, the impact there is they're firing them, and people on North Hill or in the vicinity might think that the impact is from the city, so I share that with you. And other dates, just to give more detail than you might want to know, July 2nd, we only had two fireworks calls to 911. The 3rd, there were three, and the 5th, there were three in that noon to 2:00 AM timeframe, which is when we get most of the calls along those lines. So, that's my overview of the 4th, and if you have any questions.
Councilmember Harris.
I just have a quick comment. The public, you know, anecdotally, they'll just say it was a war zone and so forth, but I'm the kind of guy who did the public records request, and I know how many calls for service there have been over the decade, and they're typically in the mid-60s, 70 was not uncommon. So, getting it down to that number is stellar, in my opinion, and the typical, you know, number of citations written was zero, so, thank you.
Yes, sir. We, again, the officers have discretion, and a lot of times, it's the first time we've been to that residence, talking to that person, and so, obviously, we want to educate and ask people to stop before we issue a citation, so thank you.
The letter, nice touch. I love that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
And I suspect the ones that got warnings will be added to the mailing list next year.
Exactly. It was actually easy to do, and record staff gets all the credit for that, sending those out, but I think it was helpful.
Great idea. Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, I'd also like to thank you for the preventive, preventative, you know, action of sending those letters out. Anytime we can do anything to prevent it, rather than have to, you know, be reactive, that it's, I think it's a benefit to all of us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, any other questions? Thank you so much for your work, appreciate the whole team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, AJ.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge Chief Coe's leadership and commitment during this interim time period. His service has been invaluable, along with the other officers. So, interim period. The next item on the city manager's report is the introduction of Chief Ted Boe, I'd like to invite you up to the podium, please. So, a little background before I turn it over to you. So, the city announced on June 12th that Chief Boe had been selected to serve as our new police chief. It's anticipated that he will start, officially start with us, in his new position mid-August 24, August 16th is what we're anticipating, pending his successful completion of a background check. So, Chief Boe grew up in Wisconsin before his family moved to Washington when he was in 7th grade. He graduated from Federal Way High School and went on to achieve a bachelor's in Business Administration from the University of Washington. He later completed his master's degree from the Naval Postgraduate School, writing his thesis on methods to improve trust in policing through intentional hiring and training protocols designed to enhance legitimacy. He also graduated from the FBI National Academy Leadership Program. Chief Boe started his law enforcement career in 2000, and advanced through positions of increasing responsibility within King County and several contracted police departments, culminating in his role as a captain overseeing all King County major investigation units. In 2018, he was selected as the police, or excuse me, he was selected as the Burian Police Chief. Has been engaged in many youth programs, to include co-chairing the Regional Gang Intervention Program, called Leadership Intervention and Change, Change, excuse me. Chief Boe is a husband to an elementary school librarian, and a father to two amazing daughters, ages 12 and 14. He's a licensed pilot, and when he's not at work, he can be found flying around in a Cessna 172, camping, skiing, or any number of outdoor activities with his family and friends. Like to welcome Chief Boe.
Thank you. I think most important, thank you for trusting me with your police department, I think that's a great honor, I think this profession's a great honor, and it's really amazing to come into a team like you guys have here. Talk a little bit about the work of the acting chief, and your officers here in the city, they're just doing amazing things, and I think sometimes it's really great to walk into an environment where you're not walking into a monstrous mess, but you're really walking into a highly functioning team, and really helping mold into everything we can make here on behalf of the city. So, really look forward to working with staff, working with council, and obviously working with my community to figure out exactly what you want, what you want from me, what you want from your department, and most importantly, building those relationships, which is what I think is the biggest part of policing that's often lost, is the relational part of policing. I also want to talk a little bit about, one of the most important things in law enforcement is that support network behind you, wife and daughter. She pinned my first badge 25 years ago, and I think that stability helps you in law enforcement, also deliver community service. I think it helps you to have that support network in your personal life and in your home, and I think it's one of the things that I like to bring is, that kind of that whole picture of healthy family, healthy personal life, and really, that helps you deliver a great product to your community. So, I really look forward to joining your community, I look forward to what the future is, and the next couple of years are going to be an amazing ride, so thank you.
Thank you, any questions for the chief? Kind of, the chief, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, nice to meet you, chief, and I'm glad you wanted to come here, we're happy to entrust you with our force. PAC Highway is, it crosses many jurisdictions, and the previous, both previous police chiefs have sort of focused on working with other jurisdictions to try to keep a lid on things, and we have now Flock cameras that are pretty successful, we think. Can you describe some of your philosophy of working with other jurisdictions, given that we're all abutting up against each other, and how to deal with crime? Because crime doesn't know jurisdictions, they don't, they don't care, they're happy to cross cities, and they're not really even aware what city they're in most of the time.
Yeah, it's a really valid point, the criminal makeup of South King County doesn't respect jurisdictions at all. The young people who are causing a problem here are at South Center Mall tomorrow, and at Burian tomorrow. Coming from a community that's 4.2 miles according to my GPS when I left my office on the way down here today, it's going to be a lot of the same people that we're going to be interacting with. The beauty is, it's also the same school district, it's the same law enforcement agencies, it's the same community organizations, in a lot of ways, because we really look at serving kind of on a broader level. A lot of the programs I've developed, we've looked at at the school district level, because a lot of times, that's a really good viewpoint when you're looking at, what's the appropriate service area? A lot of people bus up to Burian, down to Des Moines, based on where they're going to school. So, I think it's a really normal thing that we're already deeply involved in, I already sit on the scoreboard, so I'm moving one seat to the right, I believe. As far as the jail side, as far as the organizations, I'm still co-chair of LINK, Leadership Intervention Change, which is a regional program working on getting kids who are involved in gangs out of gangs. Just today, we were talking about a program that we're developing in Burian that I'm going to steal, we'll talk about that later. Really looking at how we connect kids to resources early on, before the criminal justice engaged, but rather when police start having those early contacts with them. So, in a lot of cases, those programs work on the regional scale and not on the individual scale. So, at the end of the day, you bring up a valid point, in that other than who collects the taxes, that's the only way that you know you're going in and out of a city in South King County. From the operational sense, when you're driving down International Boulevard, Pacific Highway, it's, for criminology standpoint, it makes no difference to the person committing the crime, what jurisdiction you're in, so we have to work together, so. And I already go to lunch with them regularly, all the chiefs get together for breakfast, lunch, South King County, obviously, we'll be connected with some of the investigative teams, with some of the collaborative work that we do across jurisdictions, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll take Councilmember Harris, and then Councilmember Oxiger.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Just wanted to, I've, whatever this sounds, but I watch all the cities to a certain degree, and I have been deeply impressed by your presentations to the Burian City Council. Well, first of all, you know, hats, just kudos for, you know, remaining calm and so forth, but the statistics you provide are frankly at a level that we have not had, and I look forward to seeing that, because I'm just a big fan of that stuff. You have explained the value proposition, they've just been really good over the years, and that's one of the things I'm most excited about, so, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, and a quick follow-up comment on that, is I really believe that any statistics you present are a reflection of the people pushing the radiators around on the street and doing the work. So, sometimes the easiest part about being a chief is having great people work for you, and I think that's really a reflection on your officers, and they're, they're doing the work on the ground, so it's really an honor to have those kind of officers working for you.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, welcome, chief.
Thank you, sir.
I was wondering, what are your feelings on the use of technology as a force multiplier?
Nah, feelings? I think it's a necessity in current law enforcement to use technology, I think it is also one of those things that people are somewhat uncomfortable with, depending on who you talk with, and what level of technology you're using, but it is really a necessity. We talked earlier about Washington State, we are literally the lowest staff in the nation in how we staff policing, and our crime rate is not the lowest in the nation. So, those two things are not aligned in the state of Washington, as far as how we view the level of law enforcement presence with the crimes in our community. If you're going to magnify that by not using technology, you're doing a disservice to your community, you also are probably doing a disservice to your officers, because one of the things that helps maximize their job satisfaction is having some impact and seeing results. So, you're probably not serving either one of your customers as a chief, in that you're not serving your officers, who you're responsible to serve, nor your community, if you're not maximizing technology. There's also some areas where taking some of the discretion, some of the fight out of it, I know you guys have implemented some of your speeding cameras and some of those technologies, so that's a great way to actually impact the safety on some of your roads, and get people to slow down and have some conscious awareness. There's a guy who got a ticket in Tacoma on their speeding cam, I can tell you exactly where it is. If you're not aware on River Road, there's a camera there. It has an amazing impact, because I can guarantee you that I drive down that road to go see a buddy of mine who lives down there all the time, and there's not a chance I'm going faster than 30 miles an hour in that area anymore, because it is a conscious awareness and a tool. So, I think when you're talking about Flock, you're talking about how we communicate, you're talking about some of the evidence technologies that we use, as far as NiBEN and some of those technologies, they all, or NiBEN, I'm sorry, they all work together to make you more effective as law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Welcome, chief. Thank you so much for being here tonight. This is not a question that I hope that you can have to answer, or feel that you have to answer right now, but I am hoping, yeah, exactly, I am hoping that you can bring up a bit of your enthusiasm to our recruitment efforts, and really being able to differentiate why potential law enforcement officers or existing folks who are working in the field, law enforcement officers, would like to come to Des Moines, and so I very much hope that... And so I very much hope that you use some of that spirit and the way that you talk about your profession as a way that we can accomplish that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
I think we stole from Burian the best thing they had, so.
Thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate that.
Well, I want to say, my comment is a segue off of that. I attend several regional meetings that represent, you know, the entire county and especially just South County mayors this week, and every time your name comes up, they're all jealous. They, they're just like, wow, you got a great, I mean, so your, your reputation and name precedes you, and everybody speaks so highly of you. So we are so glad to have you. Thank you so much for choosing us, so. Thank you.
Really blessed to be chosen, so I think it's a mutual admiration. Thank you.
Great. All right.
Thank you, Chief Bo, and family. Okay, so the final item on the city manager's report will be a presentation from Kylie, our civil engineer, too, and he'll be providing a project update on the Redondo restroom replacement.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Kylie, project manager for the Redondo restroom replacement project. We are seeking council approval on an item on the consent agenda today. So I would like to provide a quick project update. Would hope to provide some assistance with council decision on the item. First of all, a few information regarding the project background. The existing restroom structure was constructed more than 30 years ago, and it has now exceeded its service life. And the structure was constructed over Thailand on timber piles that have deteriorated significantly, and is required to be removed. Originally, this project was combined with the Redondo Fishing Pier project, which was advertised back in April of this year. And as we all know, the city received only one bid for that project, and it was significantly higher than the engineers estimate. And as a result, council rejected the bid for that project. And since then, staff has redesigned the project to phase the restroom project separately. And the last item is in June of 2023. Council approved $1,736,000 in bond proceed to the restroom project. And however, that, that amount was not incorporated in the 2024 CIP budget of the project. So we do have a motion on the consent agenda item today to address that. The, the scope of the project include removing the existing restroom structure, including the timber piles and associated utilities, constructing a new restroom structure in the parking lot, installing civil improvement surrounding the new restroom structure, such as underground utilities and new sidewalk, installing underground infrastructure for the future parking lot payment system. And just a quick side note, as you can see on the map there, the highlighted yellow area, which is the majority of the west half of the parking lot, is going to be utilizing for the construction staging area. The project was advertised for bid on May 29, and the bid was opened on June 18. And we also only received one bid from Christensen, a general contractor. The bid came in, fortunately, was within the ballpark of the engineering estimate. It was $1,882,951. And if we're only comparing the restroom replacement component with the bid back in April, this bid actually came in 25% lower. I want to talk a little bit about construction management service, which is necessary for, for the project. The city doesn't have adequate resources to provide construction admin and inspection services in-house. So often, we, we look for external help from a consultant firm to provide that service. So in December of 2023, staff advertised a request for proposal for construction admin and inspection services for the project, and Exotech consultant was selected through that process. And they, they had previously provided construction management service on the other successful CD CIP projects, such as the Redondo Boardwalk and the North Marina Bulkhead and restroom replacement project. So we are in good hand. Pending council approval, and I see some uncertainty with procurement time on some of the critical component of the restroom. We anticipate that the project construction can begin sometime in September of this year, and the completion date is going to be sometime in spring of next year. Here, just a quick rendering showing the plan view of, for the location of the new restroom building over in the parking lot. And it's have this slide with some motions on the agenda item. Now I'd like to open for the questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions, I'll take Councilmember Mahoney and then Councilmember Oxiger.
So I have to ask the question, being a member of the diving community, are we still planning on putting the shower off of the building?
I, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it, it would go really well with that community. A lot of people go down there and dive, and it's a nice draw, so love to see that. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I'd like to ask, though, with the time period that this is supposed to take place, Redondo Beach Drive has approximately north of 8,000 cars a day on it. You're talking about working on the west side of the road, and you're talking about working on the east side of the road. What can be expected for all of that commuting traffic? Do you have any idea how long the delays will be as far as over so many weeks or anything like that, so that we can give the community a kind of a heads up as to what to expect with all of this?
Right, so we, we, we do have some underground utility across the roadway that is going to impact the traffic, but we anticipate that it's going to be very rough. We're talking about maybe a couple of working days. The majority of the destruction is going to happen either within the parking lot itself or it's on the sidewalk area on the west side of the roadway. So it's not, we're not going to impact the traffic.
And then also, also, will there be any effect on the boat launch facility?
No, we, we do not have any, anticipate any impact to the boat launch.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you for your presentation. You'll have to remind me, and, and maybe this was discussed last year before I got here, so I'm pulling my new person card. It's right, no, just kidding. But I'm wondering if there's an opportunity here to do something about the sidewalk and increasing an opportunity for one of those lighted signs that blinks like we have on here on Marine View Drive to let folks know that people are crossing the street, whereas people cross the street there all the time. Or maybe even a raised pathway there, but I'm just looking for anything that's related to, I know in addition to the cameras, to traffic calming or slowing down, since that is such a well-traversed part of the street.
Yeah, so the, the current scope of the project doesn't include, I believe you're talking about the rectangle rapid flashing beacon. Yeah, this, right now, is currently not part of the project's scope. We definitely can look into that, see if there's a need for, for it. We can definitely incorporate that within, if our budget allow. Yeah, we can look into that also.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, well, there, it sounds like, you know, some of this is still a work in progress. So is there going to be an opportunity for the, the public in the immediate area to have a chance to give some input on, you know, things that might help down there?
The project design plan is final, so we move forward with, with that last plan. But we, we willing to take in the intent from the publics and see is there anything else we can do to improve the project.
Okay, there's been, there's been a suggestion that's garnered support from both the dive community and the, the public down there as far as some way to help direct the traffic by putting in a low wall around the parking lot. I know that Councilmember Grace Matsui and I were down just a couple of weeks ago, and somebody literally went right over the landscaping into the parking lot. And, yeah, so, you know, and the dive community has indicated that they would appreciate the wall for whenever they're trying to put their gear on or anything. They've got a stable base to put some, to be able to, you know, assist them in their, their gearing up to go down. So they're, you know, and I'm sure the community has some ideas as far as, you know, other problems that might be alleviated down there. So it, it might be a great opportunity to, you know, have some community input and feeling of, possession of, you know, the project by the community.
Right, any other, excuse me, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, and I don't mean to blindside you, but the last time I saw anything like really more renderings of this was like 2022 or something. Is this to have the same kind of concession deal as at the Marina? Like, you know, will it be plumbed and, you know, facilitate like hot food and that kind of deal?
Yeah, we, as part of the restroom, we do propose to have a concession area that has a divider. So it's going to be two separate concession area.
Okay, but it would be analogous to what, I mean, in other words, if I looked in this, it would have a similar layout for, you know, whosoever the vendor, as what's at the Marina, you know, sinks and possibly?
Yes, yeah, we, the layout, the concession area is going to be very similar to the one that we, we built down at the North Bulkhead.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So I do want to just go back to these recommendations since, just as a comment, the planning is complete and the project's moving forward as is. And so even though if they take something, I would just recommend that you either speak with the municipal facilities, members on that committee, if you have consensus. Or if you don't and you feel strongly about your recommendations, bring it to the dais and ask that the subject be brought up in municipal facilities and/or transportation when you're talking about a crosswalk. That way, your idea can move forward or not based on council opinion. So that's what I recommend for those two. And then if it gets that far, then it would be up to the committee chair, discussion and committee to move forward. All right. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Part of it's always been removing the bathroom and eventually doing the seawall. That's where we've had in mind where there would be a place for staging dive gear. Most of people stage it off their trucks and things like that. So it's really not an issue in this particular phase. It would be the next phase when they want to take that space where the restroom was and garner, make it better access to the public where that would come in. But it has to be done in pieces, so.
Right.
You're absolutely right, the project's completed, had a public review, input, so forth, went through the process. Things just take forever, especially with the new permitting that we have to do. So I just want to clarify that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Okay, and the motions are up there, but this is on consent, so we'll be addressing it next. So you won't need to make a motion unless it's pulled. Okay, Kai, thank you. Great presentation, appreciate it.
That concludes the city manager's report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have the consent agenda, and could the clerk please read our consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, public works contract Redondo Restrooms Replacement Project. Item three, alleyway naming and commemorative street name. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read, Mayor.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Mahoney. Thank you. Any, any council member wish to pull an item off consent? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, I would like to pull item two.
Item two, thank you. Any other item that someone wishes to pull? Okay, so moving forward, we will be considering items number one and three on consent. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's unanimous, seven zero, thank you very much. So Councilmember Harris, I'm going to hand it to you since you pulled in the item.
Thank you. Briefly, I will be voting no on this. There are a number of reasons. It's, the costs have ballooned, and, but basically, I believe it's strategically the wrong move. I believe that the restroom concession or the pedestrian traffic should be along the west side. And the whole idea of, it just makes a lot more sense to me than encouraging people to be going back and forth. And that's what I think, and I could go into detail, but it's just, it's not the right thing to do. So that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments or considerations on this? Councilmember Mahoney.
I just, just have to counter that comment. I've always thought aesthetically, visually, having the restroom on the west side near the water was problematic, and with the erosion and some of the other issues we've had, it's been problematic, particularly some of the piping. Not that that couldn't be fixed, but that would require a whole new army of permits. Anyway, the, the thing is, is that it's more functional over there. There's no issue there. It'll address a lot of other things we, that they don't have there. I think it's an excellent move, and it's something they'll be proud of, and it'll be much more aesthetically pleasing and provide the service that people that visit there and the residents that walk along the way much better than anything they have today. Makes a lot of sense to me. And in the future, as I was mentioning before, the access down to the beach and so forth will be much, much more pleasant experience and much more easy to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
And just to jump on the coattails of, Councilmember Mahoney is more sustainable for the future with the expectation that, expecting that we're going to have larger, more frequent king tides, putting the restroom back on the docks and rebuilding it where it is, it just absolutely makes no sense. So I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I'm going to be supporting this. This was a decision that was made a fair, fair amount of time ago to move those restrooms, and the time for dissent was at that point. It, from a cost standpoint, it's just going to be a lot cheaper to build on land and not have the ongoing expenses of having a restroom and pipes that are constantly being bombarded by king tides and having to deal with that problem, let alone trying to change this horse, not just midstream, but when we're all the way on the other side of the stream. I, I'm perplexed at that, but, you know, certainly, everybody has a right to express their opinion. I think this is a good move. I think getting it off the boardwalk is a good move, both aesthetically and from a safety standpoint. Putting it where it is and using that opportunity then to do some other things in the parking lot, and particularly to get the gates back up, you know, sort of creates a synergy that wouldn't exist if we were just trying to replace it across the street. So I, I think this is a well-thought-out. So I I think this is a well-thought-out project. We've got a bid that's at least within reason, and so I I think now's the time to move forward with it and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Harris.
I was on the council when this was put forward about 300 years ago, and there was no community input per se. If you were to poll the stakeholders, divers or whatever, they would shrug one way or the other. But I, you know, I never intend to have an argument, but I will put my engineering stamp against anyone in this room, and people have been building on saltwater since the time of the Romans. It may be more expensive, it may not, but my objection going back five years was that I thought that the council should be presented with some form of cost estimate for rebuilding, and that did not happen. It could have been extravagant, but I would have liked to have seen that number. And, you know, but the notion that, you know, somehow it's impossible to do these projects is simply not the case. But because there isn't a piece of paper that says this is, there was no alternative presented, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Well, I I was on the committee when this was first presented, so it was presented in committee. I I agree with the aesthetic reason, but also that I think that the parking lot location makes the most sense because it is going to be a rare person who is down on the Redondo Boardwalk, whose car is not over on that side of the road. So the only people walking down there generally that don't need to access their car and cross the road to leave will be people who are living down there and have restrooms in their homes. So anybody who needs a restroom is going to cross that street anyway, unless you, gosh, it's hard for me to imagine who who wouldn't be crossing the road if they didn't live down there. So it actually makes better sense to put the restroom where everybody's cars are. That's a lot of times where they are. Okay, that's my opinion. I think we'll call for a vote, so all in, oh, we need to read the motions. So, yes, so I just out of course, I will offer it to you, but it sounds like you're against all these motions, correct, councilmember Harris? Okay, so who would like to read motion number one? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment to the 2024-2029 capital improvement plan and the 2024 capital budget to include the amended Redondo restroom replacement project as described herein and include such amendment in the next available budget amendment ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mahoney has for the second. Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I have deputy mayor Steinmetz, councilmember Oxiger, councilmember Nutting, councilmember Grace Matsui, councilmember Mahoney and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Harris is opposed, six one, thank you. Motion number two, do I have a maker? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve public works contract with Chris Richardson, Inc., general contractor in, excuse me, general contractor for the Redondo restroom replacement project in the amount of $1,882,952.93, authorizing a project construction contingency in the amount of $190,000, and further authorize the city manager to sign said contract sustainably in the form as submitted.
Do I have a second? Deputy mayor Steinmetz for the second, any discussion? None, all in favor, raise your right hand. So I have deputy mayor Steinmetz, councilmember Oxiger, councilmember Nutting, councilmember Grace Matsui, councilmember Mahoney and myself, four and opposed. Councilmember Harris opposed, six one, thank you very much. Do I have a motion on, do I have a maker for motion number three? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consulting services contract with Exalt Tech Consulting, Inc., to provide construction, administration and inspection services for the Redondo restroom replacement project in the amount of $275,617.56, and further authorize the city manager to sign said task assignment substantially in the form as submitted.
Do I have a second? Councilmember, excuse me, deputy mayor Steinmetz on that one? And any discussion? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. I have deputy mayor Steinmetz, councilmember Oxiger, councilmember Nutting, councilmember Grace Matsui, councilmember Mahoney and myself, four against. Councilmember Harris against, six one. And the motion, all three motions pass. Thank you very much. And that that is the end of our consent agenda. My comment is, I'm excited for some new street names. So we pass that to Little Fan Fair tonight, excited about that. Okay, next up, we have a new business option, new agenda items for consideration. This is a time for the purpose of proposing new business, for discussion on a future agenda that also have not previously been before the council. This is not a time for council action or questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates, previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. So do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? All right, next up, we have councilmember reports, and we will begin with councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, mayor. No real report other than to say that Waterland is coming up and invite everybody to participate. Deputy mayor Steinmetz outlined many of the events and invite everybody to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I had a meeting with the group called Key to Change Studio. Quentin Morris has a wonderful education program going to provide strings, violin, viola, that sort of thing for kids in the area. There has been a drop off in music education throughout the area, and Key to Change is bringing a branch office studio to Des Moines across from Mount Rainier High School, and I am very excited about that, and I hope that he can come to the city council and introduce his fine organization. On Saturday, North Hill Espresso will be hosting a event to offer people information and rebates on septic systems, which is something that is of interest to quite a number of people in North Hill, which is sort of right on this boundary between two sewer districts, and they have a lot of homes that I hope can show up and get the rebate. I attended a Port of Seattle commission meeting on Tuesday, which got about eight residents attending. It was of surprise to the commission because they were making a final purchase of just a sliver of what is going to be Des Moines Creek Business Park West. Due to, you know, the funny way that land use is handled, they did not understand that this is a project that the city has been, you know, all in on for many years, including this upcoming thing, and we can, you know, have an argument about it. But the main thing is that the process, basically, the sign doesn't go up announcing what the thing is really going to be until this 30-day window. So it to my mind, you know, the the commission had no choice but to, you know, approve it. It's awkward for them to see this much opposition at, you know, at 1159s. And it's awkward for the developer, who has followed all of the rules. But it's a fail for the city to not communicate on an ongoing basis, look, this is what is coming to your community. And I just, the the community members want to encourage the port and the city to try to adhere to, they have what they call the land stewardship plan, which has a higher standard of mitigation, tree replacement, wetlands, reclamation and so forth. But it is just a conversation, because again, the developer has complied with all of the things that we, you know, gave them. I can only say, you know, in to have empathy for the residents, public planning commission, public planning commission, public planning commission, because frankly, the public only engages at that 30-day notice, which is three years too late. But if we had the process we used to have, it would enable people to understand what is coming down the pipe and have more of an investment, rather than what we have now, which is it's my, it's my world from, you know, working with factories. Everybody does all the right things, but you end up with a 78 Buick. And the developer will say that, hey, the brochure looks great, but residents should be concerned because they look at Des Moines Creek Business Park, phases one through four, and they're scared that phase five is going to look like those. So whatever we can do to reassure them, it would be a really lovely thing. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I want to thank the staff, particularly the marina staff, some of the events and planning and parks and recreation staff, and of course, AJ, the all the other staff that put on the drone show. I thought it was excellent, well-received in the community in general, and we we weren't C-TAC. I'll just put it that way. I want to thank the police as well. You did an excellent job, and I, one of the things I always go off of how noisy the Fourth of July is, and I'm going to say I thought it was remarkably less noisy than I've seen it in the past. And I think I didn't know you'd sent the letter, so I was really appreciative of that too. I want to remind people that Music in the Park starts next Wednesday. Six, is it six or seven o'clock? Seven, seven o'clock. And and then the other thing is, is I just want to remind people that next week, the ballots will be dropped into your mailbox, and please take time to look at the, look at the information that'll be provided, because it will be one of the most important decisions you will make in the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I did attend the drone show down at the beach park on July 4th, and I would say that it is quite a difference when you go down and sit in the seats and watch from a lawn chair or a blanket to look up at the drones than it is from my porch, where you can only sort of see a little pocket of it. And so the next time we have an activity like a drone show down for Fourth of July, I encourage folks to come down and see the community gather. We had some vendors who were there as well, and it was just a great opportunity. And I think it's very different when you have the soundtrack, you're able to hear the music that goes along with the the animation and the movement of the drones, and I would say it was far more impressive when you have a front row seat. So I appreciate that. And thanks to the staff, amazing job on such a big coordinated event, and to the police who were there as well. I wanted to just say thanks so much for acting city manager Johnson, who has been quite busy with us as a council for the last few weeks, and I appreciate the the time that you've given us, and I hope that this week has been quiet. So fingers, fingers crossed, and and I'm glad that interim city manager Tim George had a chance to take a break. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, mayor, no report, thank you.
Deputy mayor Steinmetz.
Ah, boy, it's been been a busy, busy couple of weeks, actually. Most recently, on Monday and Tuesday, and I'll be back there Friday night, I've been announcing games at the Washington State Little League Girls Junior Softball Tournament. This is a big, big deal. They're the all-stars from their various districts that are coming together and making a league, and and this is, this has just been a fantastic event. I want to thank Marnie Sabores, who's really been sort of the leader in the community, getting this event here. This also means that people are sleeping in hotels, renting spaces, eating in our restaurants. These kind of events are important to the community. And tomorrow night and then on Saturday will be the championship. So if anybody's interested and wanting to see some really top-notch girl softball, it's it's really quite fun to do, and they have snow cones. And, oh, it's at Stephen Underwood Park. So in addition, I went to the Fourth of July, I had a great time, I think everybody else did. I think this this year's show was just really a big step up from last year's. And one of the things that really caught my eye, it wasn't just that there were more drones, but they were sparkling in between forming their pictures. And what that did is that kept your eye up on the show. And so it was much more of a continuous presentation than, okay, here's one picture and then look down and then there, oh, there's another picture. It just made for a much better overall show, and it was nicely coordinated to music. I think it was a really good time. We had two food trucks that ran out of food early. That's great. I mean, tell the food truck community, people are, people want to eat, you know, because there were, there was a lot of business going on. And I didn't get over to that north parking lot when the drones started or about that time, but I heard it was absolutely packed. And that's fantastic that we had so many of the community there. I think it's a great community event. I, there was a deputy mayor's phone call from the Sound Cities Association that I attended today. We had a nice freewheeling discussion about how we're dealing with comp plans and particularly trying to meet the targets for job growth, affordable housing and such. And and that was very good. And also how they use their planning committees. So it was, that was a good discussion about how that process might work. There was a CAC Citizens Advisory Committee meeting a week ago Wednesday. That was very good. It was on the third, it was by Zoom, and we still had pretty good, pretty good attendance on that, so I appreciate everybody that came. I attended the, in addition to the farmer's market last Saturday, I went to the Redondo Garage Sale, and boy, there was a whole bunch of used CDs for sale, and my wife couldn't pull me way fast enough. But it was, you know, there was lots of great stuff. It's a good community event. It was a tough day because it's on asphalt on a hot day, but there was lots of kind of good, interesting stuff there, and I'd encourage people to look for it next year. And then lastly, I want to remind people, this Saturday at 10 o'clock, yoga on the deck at Soundview Park. I'll be there. I think councilmember Mahoney is not, is going to be spearfishing instead, but do bring something to drink. I learned that lesson the last time it was there. I I got pretty faint in the sun. Unfortunately, councilmember Mahoney was able to give me some water. 10 o'clock, yoga on the deck. See you there. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, deputy mayor, appreciate it. Well, since we last met, season three of Bridgerton dropped on Netflix, that was big. Taylor's still breaking records in Europe. So here at home, though, we've got lots going on. I wanted to, that Little League, that's that's going up there at Stevie J, that's fantastic. And councilmember Harris was calling as well, I saw him up there. But, boy, lots going. The farmer's market is in full swing, Park Run had over 100 participants last week. We have musicians on the Redondo Boardwalk, beach park concerts coming, there's music regularly down at the quarter deck. The senior center still has trips planned this summer. Movies in the park are coming up, Waterland's just around the corner, I hope you all get out to the parade. I know a couple of boats are going to be blowing lots of bubbles. Hope to see you there at the parade, Pirates Cove or the car show. So in other things, please feel free to join me for coffee with the mayor at, oh, wait a minute, I already. wait a minute, I already did that one. At noon next week, it's on the 16th, at the quarter deck. Hot topics in the region. I appreciate Deputy Mayor's reports out from the Public Issues Committee, but as you all know, we've got this levy coming up. Check out your voter guide. And I did, had one notable, I mean, I've had lots and lots of meetings, but I wanted to report out about a notable meeting. I tend this regional south county Good Eggs Breakfast that is hosted by Pete Von Reichbauer once a month. And they had an interesting guest this week, Bob Donigan. If you don't recognize the name, he's a CEO for Ivors and Kid Valley. And he, Pete Von Reichbauer introduced him as the mayor of the Seattle waterfront. And the reason why, I mean, the guy's like in his upper 60s, 70s. He's been a major voice for the redevelopment of the Seattle waterfront for like over two decades. The guy's sharp as a whip. He's, he's got his voice in everything, the Seattle Aquarium, anything having to do with waterfront down there. And so he's, he was presenting this week. And I thought he was going to be talking about the economy of the restaurant industry and how that impacts cities, blah, blah, blah. No, he talked about the Seattle waterfront and, and the history of it, and what has worked and what hasn't. And he had a slideshow, and my favorite slide was the segment on passenger ferries. And he talked about the importance of passenger ferries and where we're moving. And, and he told our story to all these elected leaders that were gathered on Wednesday about our, our pilot, and then what happened to our boat last year down in Newport. And the slide had pictures of all these upcoming ferry routes. And our route was on the slide. Our route from back and, back and forth between Des Moines and downtown Seattle. And there's so many reasons that people all over, especially down at the waterfront in Seattle, are very interested in that route. And when I saw that on that slide with this guy, this kind of influence, putting our route already on the slide, and this is what he said, he told the story, and at the end, he says, you know, this is what's going to happen because people want it. And I was thrilled to see that. I, I very encouraged, and if it does, of course, it's, we're going to, we're only going to host it, somebody else will pay for it. Something else he said too, when we're talking about waterfront redevelopment, he said 770-something million dollars have been spent, has been spent now on redevelopment of the downtown Seattle waterfront. And as a result, there's been $1.3 billion of secondary investment in infrastructure all around it because of that investment. And so we're a micro version of that. Anyway, good, good information, very exciting meeting for me. My thanks additionally to all these people, our entire staff, and notably Courtney. Just want to say her name out loud. Heard that she was a rock star. So thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate you being here. This concludes our meeting for this evening. So our next meeting date will be July 25th, city council regular business meeting. Please remember to pick up your stuff and your bottles and papers on your way out. And I'll offer a motion to Councilmember Oxger.
I move that we adjourn.
Second, to Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it is unanimous.